Meeting order. Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Parentano?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marerton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss issues related to labor relations and matters related to litigation. The Nishamony District Mission Statement. The Nishamony community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a thank you for Chris Stanley once again. He does such wonderful work for us as a community coordinator. I just want to highlight a lot of the good work that he did as we started the new school year off and especially what's become a many tradition here, those first day pictures for our students. Really nice job of capturing some fun images of students preparing for the first day of school. He does a nice job getting them out on our website. We have a variety of upcoming Board Committee meetings that are taking place both this month and next month where as our committee meetings start up, you'll hear as the Board members report out, but they're also listed in my Superintendent's Report as well if you're looking for further reference. We did talk about in August how the art gallery for August and September reflects the work of the high school students. So again, we want to thank our high school students for the sharing, the high-quality artwork and actually let me piggyback on that statement because since my report was written over the weekend, we were informed that Nishamony is one of 57 districts in the state of Pennsylvania who have been recognized for outstanding visual arts programming, rigorous and inclusive programming, highly accessible programs and highly visible programs. These schools exemplify the best of what the state is doing in the area of visual arts and we're excited and proud of our art program, our art teachers and all that help perform the work that we get to see here in our room as we watch the displays change month by month. But this is a nice endorsement. As you know, many of you who follow along, our music program has been receiving similar types of recognition over the past few years and it's nice now to see the opportunity. This is a new award for our visual arts program as well. So congratulations. We have a reminder about driving and school bus safety and on the road as the buses are back, there's a lot that we need to do as those of us who are driving our vehicles to make sure that we are doing right by the road signals that the buses provide for us to stop and be careful with children on the road. Another feature that we have is our We Build Future Awards and we were able to kick them off this month already with three award winners. Kevin Freeman, Coordinator of Student Affairs at Sandberg, Wendy Robson, the music teacher here at Maple Point, and Bill Snow, a mechanic in the district. All were early-year recipients of our We Build Future Awards. This is an award that recognizes adults here in our community, school employees and others who support our system in our efforts to accomplish our district mission statement. So we congratulate the three of them. Tomorrow is Patriot Day. It's designated as such by public law. Our school will participate in the remembrance of those in honor of the individuals who lost their lives as a result of the terrorist attacks on the United States that occurred on September 11th in 2001 and flags will fly at half-staff throughout the district. One of the nice things that this district has done over the course of a good number of years now is to make it a point to work hand-in-hand and collaboratively with our first responders and just last night, or Friday night, once again at our football game, we were able to spotlight the good work that the local first responders do for our community and for our district here and it reminds me because so much of September 11th also has a lot of thanks to do with first responders and the help that they provided our nation at that time as well. The last thing I want to highlight is the fact that at the high school, there's a new television monitor that is spotlighting Nishamony alumni and there's a whole description here and it's been on Facebook as well. Here, I reference here as my Superintendent's Report. You can find it on Board Docs, but also in Facebook, Chris Stanley has publicized the fact that with this monitor, what we're hoping to do is to spotlight good work of alumni that would be of interest to our high school students. So it doesn't have to be anything that's of such caliber that you're being invited to Washington DC to be recognized. It really can just be good, interesting, innovative, community-based activities of our alumni, business-based activities of our alumni that's good to share for our students so that they can get a sense of what the alumni of our school system are doing out there in the real world. And so we encourage you, if you have stories to tell of people in your family or neighbors or those who you know have a connection back to our district, please look to share them and it'll benefit our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This month on Board Docs, there's a report from Kelly Kozic, our Director of Human Resources. So if you want to review that, you could see what the Human Resources Department does and get some updated reports. That brings us to the first public comment period. Please, when your name's called, approach the podium, announce your name or occupation and where you reside. Mrs. Burns?
Evening. My name's John Sherno, Middletown Township, law enforcement. I was here last month at the school board meeting. We, as a group of us here, spoke on behalf of Coach Dave Chicalletti in the softball program. During that meeting, we got up here, we spoke to Coach Chicalletti's character, how we felt about him, just to let you guys know. And after the meeting, some emails were sent out to the Board and the administration. Some responded, some didn't. It's okay, but some, most likely it was a generic response. It's in the administration's hands. It's a non-agenda item and we really don't discuss non-agenda items. And some of the things we spoke about here that night, I get it, you know, if you don't want to respond to parents, I understand, but what I really want to talk about tonight was there was a group of girls that were here, the student athletes of Nishamony. They took their final weeks of summer, made a point to come out here, support Coach Chick, and they laid their hearts out here to all you guys here and the support for their coach. They haven't received any response from anybody. They, you know, they started their school year, a couple of them went to the administration to make a, to go down and speak to somebody. They were told they were too busy, make an appointment, and I can understand that start of this new school year is very busy. But as time went on, like, you know, last month and as we started thinking about more and more things, talking to my daughter about it and some of the girls on the team, you know, they're starting a new school year and they're completely in limbo. These kids these days, they were brought up with internet and technology, they all have social media and for them to get up here and speak to a room full of adults is, you know, it takes a lot of guts and I was really proud of every single one of them for having the courage to do that. We're a month in or a couple of weeks into the school year, they're still in limbo, they don't know what's going on and the athletic body at Nishamony, as most of you all know, they're all tight, they're all a tight community. The baseball boys, softball girls, they support each other a lot. The girls went right from practice, right to watch the boys play as they made their state run and so on. Well, now that school started, it kind of, they don't have anywhere to go. There's a coach still in limbo and the facilities at Nishamony, they don't even have a place to play. Coach Chick took care of a lot of that stuff that, you know, kind of seemed we took for granted, the cage time, working at night, the strength and conditioning that they did off-campus and went out to the community to find a field for them to play because they don't have a field to play on. And as, you know, you sit there talking, they came here, they encouraged them, hey, you got something to say, say it. Took a lot of guts for them to do that and they were kind of ignored. Nothing was said and even if they wanted to, there's no place at the high school currently for them to play. It's a bit of an inequality issue. The boys are playing, the boys have facilities, they have leagues, they have fall workouts and meanwhile, they're coming to school, they start the new school year, they're excited, they have nowhere to play, they have no coach, nothing's been posted and not much has been said to them. I just ask that, you know, I know there's a lot going on with the news, the start of the new school year that someone can reach out to these girls at least to tell them like, we didn't forget about you and, you know, maybe even address the issue about the facilities that are here at the high school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Sutter. I live in Langhorne and I'm an instructional assistant at the high school. I was just wondering, do any of you ever go out to any of the schools and talk to the teachers and talk to the support staff to find out what's going on in the schools? No? Okay, well, I understand that, you know, as the school board and all, you're trying to save money and the old saying is sometimes you get what you pay for. Since you've outsourced the teachers and the support staff and all that, the quality of the people coming in has deteriorated. There is a substitute at the high school that I've been in the classroom and twice he has fallen asleep. I have reported it once last year, once the year before, and his name was on the absentee list again that he's still in there this year. We have another substitute that comes in. She barely speaks English, so she comes into the classroom, she writes what the teacher has up on the board, she hands the attendance sheet to the students to check off whether they're here or not, doesn't say a word, sits on the computer the rest of the time. We have instructional assistants that come in, they're on their phone, they're sitting in the back of the room not doing anything. So basically, as a taxpayer, I feel my money is being wasted. You know, I think you really need to consider what you're doing as far as outsourcing and the caliber of people that you're getting that come into school.
Michelle McKay.
My name is Michelle McKay. I live in Middletown Township, Langhorne. I'm an alumni of Nishamony. My children are Nishamony graduates. My son is in the Air Force as Mr. Jones just mentioned about maybe recognizing some of our alum. He was just recognized for work that he did while he was deployed to Dubai. So that's something I might, you know, mention to Chris Stanley because I'm so proud of him. They specifically sectioned us, brought him out, gave him an award and it's all specific to duties that he did. It wasn't just a general, when he told me he was being acknowledged, I thought it was just a general thing for being deployed. But in any case, so I'm proud of Nishamony. I've always been a proud Nishamony alum, always felt like it was a good school district. I'm starting to question that thought. I am also a secretary in the People's Services Department here and I'm aware that, you know, I'm on the negotiating committee. I know that you just rejected the Fact Finders Report, which incidentally was something that was asked to go to fact-finding by the negotiation team of the school board. We didn't really necessarily want to do that, we wanted to try and hammer things out, but we agreed because, you know, it was pressed and pressed and pressed. We want fact-finding, so we agreed. And then the report comes out and you reject it, which is astonishing to me. Mrs. Hollenbeck, you said that it was because of language. I'm just not going to buy that. I'm not, I don't want to call you a liar, but I think maybe you're just not stating the facts accurately. One time someone, and I'm not sure which one of these board members it was, said to us, and I think it was also in a negotiating session, that this isn't personal. I want to assure you that it most certainly is personal. This is my livelihood, this is how I support my family. It's very personal when we are found to be, we feel attacked by the school board. We also feel, I, I shouldn't, I'm not speaking for others, I feel that your entire goal in this is to break our union. I know that you want to weaken us to the point where you can break us so that we're no longer a union and we can be outsourced so that you don't have to pay the pension, whatever your reasoning is, but I want you to know that this is not working. As the lady before me just stated, the people that you're bringing into our schools who are outsourced, who are Michouan or whatever that company is these days, I work in Maple Point, there was an instructional assistant sitting at the front door, she did not speak a piece of English, no English. How is she going to assist our students? I've been told by custodial staff and teachers alike that they have people that are assigned to a job and they can't find them during the day. They're either hiding in the bathrooms or wandering the hallways or sleeping in their cars or sleeping in the back of the classroom. It has been notified by, people have noticed it and have reported it and nothing seems to get done. So I want to make sure that this school board is aware of that because I'm not sure that you actually are. I do have much more to say, so maybe I'll come back in a second.
Renee Klein.
Hi, my name is Renee Klein. I live in Middletown Township in Langhorne and I work for TripAdvisor. My daughter attends Maple Point and my stepdaughter attends Carl Sandberg. I was reading through the district mission statement while I was waiting for this meeting to begin. People have a responsibility to themselves and others. That's absolutely correct. You have a responsibility to ensure that funds are allocated properly so that our children do not have to suffer. We need to figure out how our kids are going to get to and from school safely and on time and the bus drivers are also happy in the process. Kids are getting home past 5:00 PM, kids are sitting or standing on their own buses because of overcrowding, new bus drivers are getting lost, a router was not hired until July. There isn't enough manpower because there's no incentive to come here. We already have had bus drivers quit this year because when you're making $17 an hour and there's no top tier, people aren't going to want to stay for nothing. They want to know they're working towards a $5 or $6 raise eventually. I'm sure none of the administrators here take issue with the amount of money that they're making. This isn't the problem with our schools, this isn't the only problem. There are seven kindergarten classes at Hoover this year, food services is terrible because you hired a for-profit company, there's no cafeteria help, no recess aids, not to mention the outsourced company is training bus drivers on my tax dollars and they're going to other districts to drive because again, they'll be making $17 an hour forever. The mediator that was hired to negotiate even said this school district is not poor and it's not struggling. I want to know what's going to be done about this. You're continuing to put ads out for bus drivers, bus drivers are training on our tax dollars and then not staying within the Nishamony School District and that's doing something? That's the definition of insanity. While every top administrator sits on their nice cushy salaries, my kids are having to sit on the floor of their overcrowded bus. Please do your jobs and allocate these funds properly.
Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who would like to approach the podium now? If not, there is a sec.
Lois Kunst, Langhorne. Many of you know I worked with in the Food Service Department, have transferred over to the Transportation. I want everyone to be aware. Our whole support staff, every single one of us is the backbone of this district without any of us. You have nothing. I am a taxpayer. I've taken a pay cut graciously, I will accept it, but then I get an increase in taxes and as many have stated, our money is being wasted on frivolous things. I have a family to support. I am being denied that right to support my family. I want to tell you a story. My son graduated from tech school as a diesel mechanic. I am very proud of him. He wanted to come and work here. I said, no, no, no way. He left with no experience except for what he learned in school, making more money than what you are asking a certified with experience diesel mechanic.
Anyone else? Okay, there's another session at the end, so if you want to come up then, you can too. Following our items for approval, the public meeting. 2.01, contracted services for 2019, 2020. 2.02, some bid approvals. 2.03, the PSBA state elections. 2.04 is a settlement agreement. 2.05, out of district placements. 2.06, overnight trips. 2.07, the amendment to the BCIU lease of Lower South Elementary School. 2.08, the GISA amendment at Lower South Elementary School. That brings us to item three, committee reports, business operations. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
The next business operations meeting is next Wednesday, the 17th? Tuesday, thank you. Right here at the, at this location at 6:30, we will be discussing IRAMARC as well as the beginning phases of Board assumptions for the budget for next year. Thank you.
Educational development, Ms. Boyle?
Our next meeting will be October, was it October 15th? 6:30 here in the boardroom.
I'll go in order, thank you though. Facilities and planning, and that's me, there's a meeting next Wednesday, the 18th. Two of the items on the agenda will be the Verizon cellphone tower in Lower South and we'll be discussing the turf on the fields.
It's at Tewonka.
It's at Tewonka.
What time is it?
6:30.
6:30. And that's facilities and planning?
That's facilities and planning. Powell, is he, Ms. Boyle?
Our next meeting will be October 29th and that will be 6:30 here in the boardroom. Be October 20th in Doylestown.
Mr. Feather? Nishamony Education Foundation?
Over the summer, the foundation completed purchase of a digital audio recording system that will be used by musical groups throughout the district. This was the first of two special grants awarded late last year to the District Music and Arts Department. The foundation purchased a video monitor that is now installed in the main office lobby at the high school. This screen will display a rotating section, I'm sorry, selection, Nishamony alumni news and stories to inspire students and encourage increased alumni interaction. The next foundation meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 14th at 4:00 PM in the CNI conference room at Maple Point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feather. PSBA liaison, Mr. Parentano.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Currently, there, everybody's been notified in their email, the PSBA election's coming up. Please, there's a link on there to research those that are running and we'll have a form available for you all at the, one of the upcoming meetings that we'll have to fill out. The only other topic of discussion currently is recently, in fact, I made the paper, Governor Wolf has made some announcements on how he wants to address charter schools going forward. That's an initiative PSBA has been on top of since day one and there's a push, there's a few bills that are currently in front of the legislature that they're debating or will be debating in this section, session regarding changing the school funding taxes from a property tax base to some type of user tax base. There's a multitude of bills out there. The PSBA position is, they're against changing from a property tax funding. You know, every citizen will, you know, have to make that decision for themselves if the bill ever reaches the point where it's actual reality. I have lots of opinions on that, but we'll just reserve them for another, another time. That'll be all, thank you.
Tech school, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Yes, the Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board met Monday, August 26, 7:30. Ms. Bowman and myself were in attendance for Nishamony. Just a handful of items, there was mostly welcome back and, you know, housekeeping issues to start up the year. So Ms. Bowman mentioned in her board comment previous meeting, we needed to get this information out. The Skills USA competition that was held back in June, our tech school got a first place in computer programming from a student by name of Kyle Stepp. Want to be sure we brought that to your attention, very proud of him. Apparently, he came to Dr. Pesky early in the year, said, "I'm going to win." And everybody went, "Okay, sure, do your best." And he said, "No, I mean it, I'm going to win." And so he did. So that's, very proud of him. He's also, I believe, going to be attending Drexel, so. The, oh, we welcomed Dr. Sam Lee as the superintendent of record. You may know him as the superintendent of Ben Salem. He's succeeding our own Mr. Jones. And the only other real issue I thought I'd bring to everyone's attention is the Back to School Night, Tech School, September 26th. That's a Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So parents and guardians of your students going to tech, you're invited to come, follow your students' schedule and meet their teachers. So that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to the second public comment period. Approach the podium. Same rules as earlier, name, occupation, where you live.
Just had a few other comments to make, Michelle McKay, Middletown Township, Langhorne. One of the items on our, that the Fact Finder report was talking about, that we were not able to come to an agreement on prior to going to fact-finding were the number of days that we as staff have. These are negotiated days. We've earned them over the years through negotiation, give up this to get that. We've done it over the years, we've given up a lot, gotten a little, we got days. Now you want to take our days. I just, we were told that the reason you want to take our days is because there's been abuse of time, which was stated by our union representation and the Fact Finder, if you have an abusive time issue, have your managers do their jobs and call the employee who's abusing time to carpet, on the carpet for that and reprimand them and don't take it out on the rest of our membership. There are many of us who do not abuse our time, but we have earned them, we have worked for them and we don't want to give them back to you. The raises that were in the, in the Fact Finder's report, they were small, 2%, 2.25%. The national average is 3.5% for raises. So we're, all of the raises for the entire contract, we took a 0% in the first year we agreed to, yet the Fact Finder's report was rejected. So I'm not sure how low you think we can or should go. We are the lowest paid in this district and 2% of the lowest paid salaries is a very low number. Mouts too, in my personal paycheck, less than 45 cents an hour. Won't probably even cover the amount that my healthcare insurance is going to go up. So I will be coming home with less money if I get a raise at that level. And yet again, it was rejected, so it's not on the table at this point, I would imagine. I want you to know that this union, the membership of this union are here. We are ready to work. We have voted yes for the Fact Finder's report. I would like to encourage you, you have another chance. Go back and vote yes this time because it's a good contract for you and we are here, we are ready to work. We need you to see our value.
Mary Ellen Pulak. I live in the Twin Oaks section of Levittown, have been there for 33 years and I've worked for the Nishamony School District for 20 years. I was very disappointed at the vote on Thursday and as I had explained at another meeting, my brother was on a school board for many years and what really upset me more than anything, more than your vote, was that you just said, yes. You didn't make any comments and I thought maybe you couldn't, so I... So I called my brother when I got home, and I said, "Aren't they allowed to say this is a difficult decision?" And he said, "Of course." He said, "They should have. You didn't." And so that's what I'm most, I think we would have all felt a lot better if you had just told us that this was a difficult decision, but this is what you had to decide. I think we all would have been able to go home and maybe sleep that night. I didn't. I was very hurt because I give everything I possibly can, and everybody that I work with does the same. And I just think we deserve, we have worth. That's what we say, that's what we tell, teach the children. We all have worth. But unfortunately, we don't feel that you feel we do. That's what we feel. That's what we're getting. You know, I don't know how you can change it, but you need to make us be appreciated, feel that we have worth, because we all do. That's what I teach the children every day. You have worth. And that's what I think you need to teach us, that we have worth. Thank you.
All right, if there's no one else, anyone have any future topics for future meetings? All right, that brings us to board comment.
Just want to make one comment real quick. I want to thank Mr. Jones for his two years of service on the tech board. We had fought for a few years before Mr. Jones was here to try and get the Rubik changed at the tech school so that more kids would meet the criteria to be accepted into that program. Took a long time, but I know our people that were there, Cindy, John, I know Adam was there for a time period, too, had worked really hard with Mr. Jones and the other, it was six sending districts, to amend that policy. And while, you know, it still probably isn't perfect, never probably will be, more kids now have an opportunity that want to engage in vocational training than could before, and I just want that to not go unnoticed.
What's that? I would like to address some of the concerns or statements that were brought up in regards to the Fact Finder report. I will reiterate, the Fact Finder report is public record, so anybody can go look and see what I am talking about. There are specific sections that the Fact Finder ruled in that contradict each other. We, by law, are governed to take all of it or none of it. We couldn't take the Fact Finder's report because there are specific sections that were contradicting to each other. One section said one thing, another section said another thing. I can't get into that here at this forum. As I said, they're public record, so feel free to look at them. I look forward to getting back to the negotiations table to discuss the topics so that we can iron out the language of these sections in question. As far as union busting, I can't speak for anybody else on the board, other than, I grew up in a union family, and my husband is a 20-year employee who works for a union company, so I do understand the value of it. As anybody on the negotiation team knows, you guys accepted it. I appreciate that. We could not base on language, and once it goes back to the negotiation table, everybody will be able to see what I am referring to and maybe retract the statement of me being accused of being a liar. Thank you.
Feel free.
I'd also like to comment on what I heard tonight. I'm a PFT member. I'm Philly Federation teacher, so I get it. I'm not union busting. I am a union member. I read the Fact Finding report. You need to do the same. There are things in there that contradict each other. That's not good for you, that's not good for us. It's language. Come to the negotiation table, ready to negotiate with a group that can talk, maybe smaller group that can talk. And, you know, nobody up here is trying to bust your union. I kind of take offense to that. I'm a union member. And when I read that, I kept that in mind.
I have to reiterate that, too. I'll speak for myself, though I know many of us feel this way. We are not trying to bust this union. I'm the son of a steelworker. I grew up through some of the knock-down, drag-out strikes that went on in Fairless Works. I know how that goes. My father was a shop steward. When he taught at the tech school, he served on the contract negotiation committee. When, when their membership was talking about, you know, "Let's hit the pavement, let's show them," my dad said, "You have no idea what you're talking about, how long this could drag out. We need to settle this, we need to go to negotiating table and work this out." And they did. I work with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, I work with steam fitters, I work with boiler makers, side by side. I also work with administration. I see both sides of this discussion. We come to these, these discussions, you know, and we talk about them in session, and believe me, I understand both sides of this issue. I am asking you, please, to go back to that table and hammer this out. I believe you can. The Fact Finder, it's an all-or-nothing proposition. We all understood that. There's language in there we simply can't accept, or we will all have issues down the road. Please go back to that table, please negotiate in good faith. I promise you, we want to. Thank you.
So I have stated before how I feel about the support union, and that hasn't changed. I've gone on record against some of my fellow board members, you know, against their best, their wishes, okay? I still stand where I stand. Nothing's changed, okay? It was a difficult decision for me to make. It hurt. It hurt. And it hurt facing the ramifications of that. But again, I'm going to mirror what everyone on this board has already said, okay? There isn't a single person here that doesn't believe in your worth. I certainly do. I've sat down and broke bread with you. I want what's best, not just for you, I want what's best for the district. And I do believe that we can come to an agreement. I think we're all sincere. And again, I'm one of nine, but I think we're all in agreement that we want to have an open agreement and a contract that's going to benefit everyone. To do that, you know, we need to jump through some hoops. The union's going to have to jump through some hoops, okay? But if we're willing to do that, there'll be an agreement sooner rather than later. And again, we're very hopeful that everyone's going to get, no one in any of these negotiations gets everything they want. We certainly don't expect it, and you can't expect it either, okay? But through compromise, we'll come to something that'll be mutually beneficial. We've done it before. There shouldn't be any reason we can't do it again. One last thing in regard to Coach Chicoletti and that decision. Decision was made at the high school level, and I've spoken to people at the high school. I've spoken to Coach Chicoletti himself. It's unfortunate, the situation. You know, again, I believe the folks at the high school did what they had to do, and hopefully, and I believe even the folks at the high school want to see the students. I responded to every email that was sent to me, and whether they were student or otherwise, nothing, there's no email, there's no way for me to tell who's a student, who isn't. So I responded to everyone the same way. I looked into it. Again, I sat down with some of the people involved through my own Fact Finding. I spoke with Mr. Jones. And again, it's our hope at this point, since there is, to get a smooth transition, and hopefully we'll get those girls playing on the field as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Good, Irene.
I think it's, it's an established fact that I am a friend of labor, and when I was in the committee, I did the very best I could to argue, you know, your case. I certainly value everyone. I can understand why you do not feel, feel valued. But I think it, I think it is a mistake, though, to assume that people on the other side are just out to get you. It's not a good idea to, to single out, like a member of the committee, and say that she was not telling the truth. It's just, just a person's opinion is, comes from the heart, you know, and I may not agree with that opinion, but I think that everyone on the committee, you know, has the best interest of the district and of you at heart. It's just that, right now, we, we have a disagreement. And I think the very best thing to do is to come back and, and look at the people across the table and say, you know, "We're going to make this work." And you may give up, and we may give up, but, but I think to assume that we're, we're just, you know, evil, terrible people, that I don't think that that is the best approach to pursue, you know, the agreement. So, that's it.
I have to concur with Ms. Boyle. We've been through this negotiation process for quite some time now. We've seen some good points and good processes, and we've seen some not-so-good processes during this negotiation. We've hammered out, and we've worked out a lot. We've gotten to a point where we're all in agreement with most of the things in this contract, and we're almost there. It really does come down to language, and that's the bottom line. The other part of this, too, I think we're missing, is the outsourcing part. That part of this contract, and that's part of this negotiation, was laid out in the forefront, and we agreed as a school district, as a board, as a committee, that was off the table. We value every one of you. We want to continue to work with you and continue to have you as part of our school district and as part of what it is that we do. And I don't want to sound cliche, but, what's our mission statement? What is that? We build futures. And we know that our community members and the people that live in our community, and all of you who do this on a daily basis, contribute to that, for our children, for our district. It is not just a simple statement to me. I've brought up both of my children through this school district from day one. I now have a grandson in this school district. I have a vested interest. We all have a vested interest. This is not a game. We're trying to work this out. We want to make this work. We are not trying to take things from anybody. So please, I ask you, I beg you, sincerely, come back to the table so that we can actually work this out and move forward. Thank you.
All right, if no one else, I think there's really nothing that I could add that my fellow board members have not said already, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second by numerous people. All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.